Good evening, welcome to the Town Vice Planning Board Meeting for March 19, 2025. Just two housekeeping matters before we start. If you're here for item one on the agenda, Danielle Bissette, that will not be heard this evening, it's been adjourned. And if you're here for item four on the agenda, which is SPJLLC, that has also been adjourned and will not be heard this evening. Would everybody please rise for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States as America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We remind applicants to please keep their presentations to thirty minutes or less. If you're a member of the community and like to be heard on an application, that's marked as a public hearing. There are yellow cards in the back, please fill one out and bring it up. And we ask you to please keep your comments to three minutes or less. First item on the agenda this evening, planning board application, public hearing, Miles Pollock, PB 2024-017, south side of Montauk Highway, State Route 27A, approximately sixty point one feet west of Williams Street, East Islip, Seventy-Sixth Main Street. App can request a planning board special permit for a mixed-use building in the business district pursuant to sixty-eight dash two-five-seven point one G. Site plan modifications are also requested as part of this application. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Stephen Affelt. I'm here representing Miles Pollock. I hold an office at forty-one Lee Side Drive, Gray River, New York. Tonight, we're requesting special permission to construct three apartments within our existing second floor of our building. We have minor site plan modifications such as a small refuse enclosure and changing our parking to remove one spot to allow for accessible access for a larger van spot. And no other modifications to the exterior of the building or the site. I apologize, this is my first planning board presentation, so I am not sure what kind of expectations you are looking for me, but I'd love to answer any questions. I feel like that's probably a better route to travel down.
So what we'll do is we'll go to Ms. Woznick for a staff report. If there is nobody here who wishes to be heard, I do not have any cards. Did anybody come in who wished to be heard on the application? Seeing none, we'll do a staff report from Ms. Woznick, then we'll come back for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is located on the south side of Main Street and East Islip, approximately sixty feet west of Williams Street, and it's improved to the two-story commercial building built in the early nineteen hundreds. Tonight, the applicant's looking to convert the second-floor office space into three one-bedroom apartments. All the work associated with the change in use will be interior. The site itself is generally in good condition, however, some site improvements are necessary to help the site function better. For example, an easement will be required to allow adequate access to the rear parking lot, and the handicap stall needs to be reconfigured. This application will require a parking relaxation from this board. However, it is notable that this change in use decreases the required parking for the building overall. In addition, the applicant provided a parking study for the lot on-site, street parking, and the closest municipal lot, which shows there is adequate parking available in the area. East Islip unfortunately does not have a wide availability of public parking, so the applicant agreed to restrict the parking on-site to be residents of the apartments only. And then require the commercial customers to make use of the public parking. This way we don't have any overnight parking in the municipal lot. Based on this, planning recommends the board grant the application, subject to the attached conditions, which waive site plan recruit, which waive site plan review but require minor site improvements.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Mr. Brown?
Yes, Kelly, this is for Kelly. Kelly, did you say that the relaxation is a less... Kelly, under the current application, the parking relaxation would be less than what the current use is? And the covenants... I'm trying to get the mic here. And the covenants restrictions have been looked at and agreed to by the applicant?
Yes, they have.
Are there further questions from the board? And you're in full agreement, obviously, that the parking behind, on the property will be restricted to the residents only?
Correct.
I think that, to me, is a key factor in approving this. If there's nothing further, is there a motion? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to close the public hearing and make a motion to grant the application based on the staff report.
It's a motion by Mr. Brown to close the public hearing, grant the application, subject to the covenants restrictions. All in favor. Oh, second was by Ms. Cruz, all in favor?
Second.
Opposed, abstentions, applications granted.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Item three on the agenda, town board application, I'm sorry, planning board application, public hearing, Tesla PB 2025-003, southeast corner of Veterans Memorial Highway, State Route 454, and Crossway East Bohemia, 2950 Veterans Memorial Highway. App can request a planning board special permit for a retail fuel service station in the industrial corridor district pursuant to sixty-eight dash four-six-six point one L six. App can also request a waiver of sixty-eight dash four-six-six point one six and sixty-eight dash four-six-six point one six B, requiring a food market component. Sixty-eight dash four-six-six point one six requiring a minimum separation, six A requiring a minimum separation of a quarter-mile from an existing fuel station, sixty-eight dash four-six-six point one six E requiring compliance to Article twenty-seven for fuel retail service stations, sixty-eight dash four-six-six point one six F prohibiting vehicle repair and storage in order to allow the operation of an auto body collision center, and the outdoor storage of one hundred and nineteen cars. Site plan modifications may also be requested as part of this application. Good evening to the applicant.
Good evening.
Asking for a lot of waivers there.
I try and, you know, put it all in one package. That way you don't have to see me for a year. Garrett Gray from Webber Law Group, 290 Broad Hollow Road, Melville, New York, for the applicant. I'm here today representing RLP Three Venture Park ISP Owner LLC, which is a subsidiary of Venture One Acquisitions, which is a company you should be very familiar with, I will call somebody up in a moment, as well as Tesla, the proposed, then RLP Three is the owner, Tesla has the proposed less C of a portion of the property. Joining me this evening are Brian McDonough, Venture One's Vice President for the Northeast Region, and David Coulter and Jack Marquezzi, Tesla's Program Managers. Before I start, I would like to call Brian McDonough just to tell you a little and refresh your recollection about who Venture One Acquisitions is.
How's it going, everyone? Thanks for your time tonight. We really appreciate the partnership with the town. This is our first of three projects that we've worked on. And just most recently, to refresh your guys' memory, just broke ground on about a hundred forty thousand square foot freezer-cooler facility on Smithtown Avenue. The town's been great to work with over the years. We appreciate all the, all the support. In total, I think we've, we've invested about a hundred fifty million and continuing to look for opportunities to, to make investments in the community. So appreciate the time.
Thank you. So we've appeared before this board with regard to the now-built, but then-proposed industrial warehouse that has been constructed on this site, as well as Venture One's warehouse project at thirty-two seventy-five Veterans Memorial Highway in Ronkonkoma, and its warehouse project in twenty-one hundred Smithtown Avenue in Ronkonkoma. The property we're here to discuss tonight, however, is Venture One's first project in Islip. The subject property is located on the southeast corner of Veterans Memorial Highway and Ninth Avenue in the hamlet of Bohemia, with the mailing address of twenty-nine fifty Veterans Memorial Highway, also known as Section 146, Block One, Lot One, on the Suffolk County tax map. The lot is approximately nine point seven acres with a frontage of six hundred and ninety-eight point nine seven feet on Veterans Memorial Highway. It is presently zoned ICD and is currently improved with a brand-new state-of-the-art one hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy square-foot industrial building. The area to the north, east, west, and south of the property is zoned industrial. It is Tesla's plan to lease forty thousand, one hundred and fifty-two square feet of the building for use as a Tesla charging station, as well as an accessory Tesla collision center. Let me first discuss the primary charging station. This station will consist of seventeen Level Two commercial charges, ten along the front of the building, and seven along the rear of the building, which will only be used in the rare event that all ten charges in the front are in use. Level Two commercial charges are capable of delivering a charge of thirty to forty-four miles per hour of range. Why, you may ask, and the planning department actually did ask, would we not equip this site with superchargers, which transfers a charge much more quickly? There are a couple of reasons for this. First, there is a supercharger site located two point five miles away, about six minutes, in Ilandia. So if all a Tesla driver wants to do is quickly charge their car, they are free to go there. However, Tesla owners will need to update their vehicle's computer software via Wi-Fi to unlock new features and update mapping information. Supercharger sites do not provide Wi-Fi, while a Tesla dedicated center such as this stores these updates locally, thereby greatly speeding up the downloading process. This is an important service to owners who live in higher-density housing, as they may not have Wi-Fi where their vehicle is parked. Also, one of the relaxations we seek is to allow this charging station to be within a quarter-mile of another retail fuel-filling station. While this charging station may be within a quarter-mile of a gas station, it is two point five miles away from the nearest charging station. Another relaxation we are seeking is a waiver of a food market component. Given Tesla's design for this charging station, as well as the accessory collision center, it simply did not make practical sense, practical business sense. Despite this, and as shown on the proposed floor plan, there is a coffee bar being offered with snacks, a lounge area, and a customer waiting area directly inside the building. People charging their cars and downloading software can feel free to make use of these areas. More importantly, there is a food market and delegateessen directly next door, which Tesla customers can use. Indeed, if this project contained a food market component, it would directly compete with this business next door, causing tension in the neighborhood. Tesla wants to be a good neighbor to all, including local businesses, and the last thing it wants to do is open something in direct competition with a neighbor. Let's now move on to the collision center. As an initial matter, I would like to point out that this will be Tesla's first collision center in Suffolk County. Similar to Venture One choosing the town of Islip for not one but three industrial projects, with this being the very first, Tesla has chosen Islip for its first collision center in Suffolk County. Also, the rendering of what this is going to look like, I had handed out to all of you so you could see it a little more closely. It's a very sleek, clean design, and I think it really fits into the Vets Highway corridor. I am going to ask that one more document be handed out, as I call David Coulter from Tesla, to testify about some of the specifics of the collision center.
We'll take that and make it part of the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for hosting us tonight. My name's David Coulter and I'm Program Manager within our Collision Business Development Unit at Tesla. We have offices at thirteen fifty Corporate Drive in Westbury, New York. We'd like to point out a couple of aspects of the project that we feel will please the town board and its constituents this evening. Tesla envisions and constructs all of our collision centers to ensure all work on a customer's vehicle is done within the four walls of the building. No work will be performed outside of the building, or for the public to see, or more importantly, to hear. Thanks to the concrete construction of the building and additional insulation provided to meet HVAC requirements, we also believe this building is very well insulated, and any noise created in the building will not escape. Our developers previously permitted this building with an attractive, eye-catching design, as has been distributed, and we plan on enhancing that with a Tesla word mark, albeit subtle, on the outside of the building. Tesla plans to operate in the building between six AM and eleven PM, with customer-facing hours between eight AM and five PM. As Tesla customers are accustomed to, all Tesla vehicles request, all service to Tesla vehicles, excuse me, is requested via the Tesla app on their mobile device ahead of them coming into the site. This helps pre-work their appointment and make sure that their one trip into the Tesla collision center is as valuable as possible. The side effect that we think will please the board is that trips to the collision center back and forth by customers are reduced to one, and cuts down also on people just coming in looking for service. They know that they need to do it first through the Tesla app. All vehicles in progress and awaiting pickup will be in the lot behind the building, out of view from Veterans Memorial Highway. Tesla collisions also please to provide rental cars to its customers who are undergoing service at the repair center. As part of this, we plan on only having at maximum five of these rental vehicles on-site while they're changing hands from customer to customer. Our site is designed with ample parking throughout, as you can see on the site plan layout. We envision employees mainly parking in the rear of the building, freeing up as much parking in the front for people charging and customers coming to receive their vehicles. Our collision centers, and I think this is an important point to really underscore, are not like your traditional collision center that you may be familiar with. At Tesla, we really truly believe that we're a technology company first, and our service centers are, should be maintained as lab-like environments. We keep dust to a minimum, we keep trash well-organized, and because we're a greener-focused company, we also really truly look forward to recycling and using, you know, our resources to the best of our ability. Tesla's excited to become a part of the community here, and we believe this fulfills your need, the constituents' need in the local community, and aligns well with, you know, businesses that we'd hope, we'd want to attract. Thank you. I'm available for questions.
Thank you.
Finally, I would like to point out that we had heard through the grapevine that AHRC, which is located on Crossway, is across from the opposite side of twenty-nine fifty Vets, had a couple of concerns regarding the proposed project. I'd like this board to know that we personally met with their CEO to discuss their concerns. We were able to alleviate all of them, and I'm proud to say that AHRC now fully supports the project. While it does sound, Mr. Chairman, like a lot of relaxations, really, a lot of them are simply explained away. A gas station and electric charging station, while both deemed to be fuel stations, are obviously different in that if another gas station is within a quarter-mile of a charging station, they really don't compete. So that relaxation was easy. There is a coffee bar, snacks, and place-to-sit component of the collision center where the charging customers can sit, and again, directly next door to a full-service convenience market and deli. So that relaxation is easy.
Mr. Gray, can I just ask you?
Sure.
Before, I mean, the primary issue here is that the vehicle repair is expressly prohibited.
The what?
Vehicle repair shop is expressly prohibited there. So let's get past, I mean, that's the hurdle you need to get past. The other ones are not as, I mean, they're critical, but the most critical one is that it's expressly prohibited.
Sure. The code was written so that this board had the power to waive that condition, that collision centers are expressly prohibited. I think the reason behind prohibiting collision centers is that Vets Memorial Highway is a very important corridor for the town. It's one of the main drags, if you will. You want to make sure that it is kept with clean industrial buildings on both sides going back and forth, and you don't want things like motor vehicle repair or collision centers where you see roll-top doors up and down, broken cars all around the lot, cars coming in with their sides caved in waiting for service, those kinds of things. Those things don't happen here. This particular center blends right into the landscape. This is a very unique collision center. This is not like your Alan Joe's collision center. And I'm sure you all have a particular collision center that you frequent, and you can picture it in your mind, and you know what it looks like. And it looks nothing like this. We have been extremely successful with these centers all along, all around the country, and they are quite different in that because they use appointments to schedule service, they can regulate how many cars are coming in, how many are coming out, the loaner cars going in, the loaner's cars going out. It's all an algorithm. And they do this to make sure that it is clean, operating at maximum efficiency, and everything is in the back. So you will not see a thing from Vets Highway. So the purpose behind the restriction on motor vehicle repair facilities on Vets Memorial Highway is really kept up with, by allowing this particular kind of center.
I hear what you're saying, but, I mean, they talk about architecture, but they also talk about a use. If it was strictly...
They also...
They also talk about the use of the property, what's going in there. So why would they mention vehicle repair shops if, in fact, you can put up a nice building and still have a vehicle, vehicle repair shop in there? And also shifting the stuff to the back, there are residences in the back as well.
Because...
So you have that problem also.
Right. Because, I'll get to the residences in a second. I believe because gas stations very often have a motor vehicle repair component, where you have the, again, the roll-top gates, doors up, cars on lifts, cars scattering in the parking lot waiting to be repaired, that's generally part of a motor, of a fuel-filling station. And I believe that's why they allow motor vehicle fuel-filling stations on the Vets Highway corridor with a special permit, conditioned on no motor vehicle repair being taken, taking place in the building. Again, the use, it all has to do with the look and feel of Vets Highway. You can see from this building, I mean, this blends right into the industrial warehouse that it's attached to. Other than the Tesla sign, you can't tell that that's a motor vehicle collision center. It's that sleek and clean. Everything is in the back. As far as the residences in the back, which are still zoned industrial, there are thick buffers, and I believe fencing that shield them from view. They would not be able to hear any noise. They would not feel any vibrations, dust, odors, any noxious fumes. We try and keep it clean, front and back. And we're willing to do whatever it, it takes to keep that up. This is a very unique center. And I am fairly certain that the drafters of the code did not have something like this in mind. Rather, they had the mobile station with the motor vehicle repair, an inspection station in mind when they restricted motor vehicle repair.
I think it's a nice application. I think it's in the wrong area. That's...
Is it the wrong?
...area, based on the ICD study that was done. But let's hear the rest of your report. Let's get a staff report here from the community, and then we can come back for more questions.
My report is concluded.
Okay. Go to Mr. Brown to call if any speakers.
Nick Figurito. Just come up to the microphone, Nick. Give your address for the record.
Hello, Nick Figurito. I'm one of the residents who lives behind that building right now. I'll be brief. I just wanted to make sure that right now with the building, they have actually done a decent job with keeping the lighting down in the parking lot. I wanted to make sure that that wasn't going to be increased, the lighting in the back of the parking lot. Also, signage, you don't want, it's actually a very tall building, so you don't want a big neon sign blinking in the back of people's backyards. So any signage should be kept to the front if you were doing that. And additionally, I mean, there is a buffer zone, but what happened is you, a lot of the tree growth was taken out. So now it's stick pines, so there isn't a big buffer zone. It would have been nice if they had put in some maybe buffered trees, big buffered, you know, the evergreen trees instead of the lollipop trees they put in. But that's what I'm saying. So the main, my main concern is lighting, that it doesn't increase any more lighting. I don't know where the super, you know, where the charger stations are going, residents to the back of the, I guess there's like twenty-five feet to the back of the fence. And that was my big, my concerns, was the signage, the lighting. And if they are concerned about noise, what about a tree buffer zone, you know, a better than taking down what was most of the trees, and now it's left with stick pines? That was it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That's the only card I have. Does anybody else wish to be heard on the application? Not seeing anyone, I'm going to turn to Ms. Woznick for a staff report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is located on the southeast corner of Vets Highway and Crossway East in Bohemia, within the industrial corridor district. The property received planning board approval in two thousand and twenty-one to construct a hundred and twenty-two thousand square-foot warehouse with accessory overnight parking of fleet vehicles for distribution of goods. Since that hearing, the applicant has obtained site plan approval, along with several building permits. Currently, construction is ongoing as no CO has been issued for the building. At the time of the original application, there were no prospective tenants for the building and was proposed as all warehouse space. Tonight, the applicant is looking to permit a forty thousand square-foot Tesla auto body collision center, along with ten Level Two EV charging stations located in the front of the building for public access. The number of waivers associated with this application is a direct correlation to the incompatibility of the use within the zoning district. The applicant is requesting a waiver of the food market component, a waiver of the separation from an existing fuel station, a waiver of the entire zoning Article XXVII for retail fuel service stations, a waiver of the code prohibiting vehicle repair, as well as a parking relaxation. The property is located within the ICD, which was the subject of a corridor study in two thousand and seventeen. The intent of the study was to promote a mix of pervert industrial uses and to allow certain retail services to support the local workforce and nearby residents. Its goal was to permit businesses that support industrial and office development, such as equipment sale, equipment sales and office storage, and to allow very specific commercial conveniences to serve employees and visitors, as well as acting a gateway to the MacArthur Airport. This application is working through the retail fuel service station special permit that was added to the zoning code as part of that study. Those code amendments not only specifically prohibit auto repair, but it also goes so far as to require a food market component to occupy at least fifty percent of the floor area of these uses in order to ensure a food service use is a primary use of these sites. Auto repair is typically considered a commercial use and not identified as quality industrial development, which is the major theme for the industrial corridor district. Auto repair uses, especially collision, collision centers often have unsightly damaged cars outdoors, in addition to the constant delivery of cars via tow trucks that create a lot of noise, which is incompatible to, next to a single-family community. This particular application has over forty thousand square feet of repair space and outdoor storage for over a hundred cars, so there will be a high number of tow trucks visiting the site and wrecked vehicles on the property. It is also a concern of the division that the storage area could be used for inventory since the storage lot is very large, and it's not likely that the shop will be servicing that many vehicles at one time. In addition to the auto repair concerns, it is also difficult for staff to realistically agree that the primary use of the subject property is for retail fuel service. The applicant is proposing Level Two charging stations, which take between four and eighty hours for electric cars to get a full charge. It's unlikely... It's unlikely that members of the public will be using these stations as the site offers no food market component or other shopping services where people could wait for their cars to be charged. The majority of the tenant space is dedicated to auto repair and the majority of revenue will likely be generated by the auto shop and not the electric charging stations. It is more likely the charging stations will be used by customers, employees of the auto shop, similar to other charging stations accessory to shopping centers. It is also important to mention the applicant is requesting a waiver of the retail fuel service station code demonstrating the inability to comply with general town standards for these uses. In addition, the Planning Division has received several letters in opposition, opposition to this application, along with a petition of opposition signed by over 50 residents from the residential community to the south. Pursuant to Town Code 68-35, the waiver of the requirements may only be made in the event that the requirements are found not to be requisite in the interests of public safety or general welfare or inappropriate to a particular special use. The listed requirements for retail fuel stations do serve these interests and they were adopted from a well-considered plan, and each of these waivers are contrary to the intents of the plan to support the local employment base. Overall, the proposed use does not meet the spitting intent of the corridor study and it's difficult for staff to overlook that the principal use is an auto body shop, which is outright prohibited in the ICD. In addition, no food market component is proposed, which is a basic use required by the study to allow fueled uses. And lastly, the applicant is not able to demonstrate that the requirements do not serve the interests of the public's general welfare or are otherwise inappropriate. So based on this, Planning would recommend the board deny the application.
Thank you, Ms. Woznick. Questions from the board? Mr. Brown?
Yes, hi, Mr. Garrett. You know, listen to Ms. Woznick's report and everything, it's a stretch to try to get this to the zoning that you're asking for. The intent of the zoning was to, for service station, was to have fuel, food for the residents. This is more self-serving for the business. And it's a good application, I would agree with my chairman, but not in this zoning, on the corridor.
Well, I would have been able to directly address Ms. Woznick's report had she provided it when I asked her before this afternoon, rather than tell me one did not exist. That being said, this does serve a public welfare. There are extremely large number of Tesla drivers in the town of Islip. They need, in addition to charging, they need software downloads, which this provides. As I said before, the food market component, again, is associated with your typical retail fuel filling station where somebody goes and fills up their car and can get a few snacks. There's a deli right next door. There is no...
Right, but that's not part of this application.
Right.
And same thing too with the fuel. I mean, the charging stations that you have are Level 2. So somebody can't be driving down there, pull off and get a quick charge and you use it for that as a resident and move on.
No, they, they can pull in, download their software, hook up the charger while they're doing so, and then take off. While that, while that's happening, they can go in and enjoy the coffee bar, the snacks, the relaxation area, or if they want more, they can go right next door to the deli.
Right, which is not part of the application. It's not, it's not being serviced on the property as part of the application.
You can take notice that there's a deli right next door.
So, but I'm, I'm going to, you know, stick to what I believe and what I believe the intent of the corridor ICD intent was, which this I do not believe. It's, I think it's just too far a stretch to get there. And that, that's my opinion.
There may be, I, I mean, it was a very creative zoning analysis that we undertook to be able to present this application to the board. And the only reason we did so is the unique nature of this particular collision center. Like I said...
Mr. Garrett, don't, don't get me wrong. I want to see this application. I want to see it in the town of Islip, I really do. But it is, it, I just don't believe it could fit here.
See, I, I think, i, if I may, having the prestige of a Tesla dedicated site on the Vets Highway corridor is, can only be deemed an asset to the town. This blends in with the landscape. There's no, everything is conducted inside. There is no visual disturbance. There's no audio disturbance. This is completely different from your run-of-the-mill collision centers and motor vehicle repair centers that the code sought to prevent. If I was here...
Right, but you've got to understand, the precedent that we would be setting would kill our zoning.
See, I, I don't agree, but that's because of the unique nature. If I was here representing A and B collision, I, I really wouldn't have a leg to stand on. I would've said, look, we want to be here, you know, this is it, please grant it. But what I'm saying is the uniqueness of this particular center and everything that they do that other centers don't does not establish a precedence because no other collision center can come in here and say, we do this, 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 and this, just like Tesla. None of them do.
Right, but the relaxations that you're asking for? Other people could ask for the same relaxations for their businesses based on this application.
But I think Mr. Friedland had, had it right when he said, look, the, the other relaxations, I, I mean, a quarter mile from another fuel filling station, it's a quarter mile from a gas station. So that, you wanted, you didn't want a, a gas station on every corner. You're not having a gas station in every corner. So there, there's no distinction with keeping that restriction. As far as the food market component, again, next to a deli, and there is a food service and rest area inside the building. So again, that's a distinction without a difference. Really, the only thing it boils down to, as Mr. Friedland said, is we're looking to put a motor vehicle repair shop here where, one, your general motor vehicle repair isn't allowed. And when you're talking a motor vehicle repair, since it was in connection with a special permit for a fuel filling station, what the drafters had in mind was a mobile station with a bowl of market in the middle and no roll top doors with cars on lifts and cars coming out. That's not what this is. So we are seeking to put something that the drafters did not specifically seek to prevent. As a matter of fact, when the code was drafted, there were no electric Tesla service stations. There were none. That's why we are here today, because we had to get into zoning interpretation from Islip's zoning department deeming an electric charge, charging station to be equivalent to a fuel filling station because there was no such thing as an electric car charging station when the code was drafted.
I just want to clarify one thing. I said the major hurdle we need to get over is the fact that it's expressly prohibited. Not dismissing the other relaxations, the major one that we had to get over was the fact it's expressly prohibited.
Yes.
So I just want to put that on the record and be clear about that.
Sure. What I'm, what I'm saying are, is the things that the other restrictions sought to protect are not present here.
And I just also want to clarify for the record that staff generally does not release staff reports to applicants. They'll discuss with you some of the issues that are raised, but to imply that Ms. Woznick withheld, purposely withheld a staff report from you is not accurate.
She emailed me that there was no staff report.
Okay. Well, there's a staff report present, prepared for us, not prepared for council, so I just want to be...
I've always gotten the staff report ahead of time, so I, I, I'm not...
I'm not sure where you've gotten those before, but they, they are not released. So they may have discussed with you and discussed the issues and concerns, but I just want to...
The, the prior applicant did say he received the report and...
He received the covenants and restrictions, which is what he signed. But I'm not going to get into that. That, I just want to put on the record that Ms. Woznick prepares a report for us and it's not released to the council. I'm going to go to Mr. Fujiari first, and then I'll go to Mr. Wilson.
I think, just echoing what the chairman said, I think the, the big point here is that the code just expressly prohibits the repair in this, in this particular zone. And with that being the case and all the waivers that you're requesting, why would you select this location when there are other industrial properties all over the town of Islip that, that are vacant and would, you know, be compliant with the type of use that you're, you're looking to seek?
This particular location had the correct visib, visibility.
That's the point.
The correct layout, because there was a large parking area in the back and a very small parking area in the front. And they wanted to make sure that everything can be done, everything can be stored in the back away from public view. The configuration is perfect because cars and tow trucks come in along the side and immediately go to the back. There is, again, no visibility from the street. It, it's something that the community wants and something that I believe fits in here in this Vets Corridor.
I think you said the key word, visibility. I think Tesla sought out this location for the visibility of Tesla along a main drive, especially a main drive that leads to our airport, which we're always trying to promote.
Well, every, I think every company wants visibility.
It's the same reason where I believe the intent of the town fathers when they adopted the ordinance that prohibits the vehicle repair along this main corridor was just for that, for visibility, visibility.
I, I agree with you as far as, I, I couldn't agree more.
Now, I, I can't say that the use here, the building, it's all impeccable, it's, it's nice. But until the town board changes the code that, you know, doesn't strictly prohibit this type of use in, in this zone, that's what handcuffs us right now.
I, I think that there, there's a few, a few distinctions in what you just said. Yes, Tesla wants the visibility of a main drag. And yes, the town is concerned with visibility along the Vets Memorial Highway corridor. You can't tell that this is a collision center. You can't. I mean, if you look at it, it blends completely in with the industrial building.
From this picture, yes. But when tow trucks start driving vehicles in, you know, that are destroyed, you know, and need to be repaired, you know, I understand your, your app that, you know, requires appointments, that controls trip generation, but it doesn't control, you know, cars, wrecked cars coming in on, on flatbeds and the like, right in a corridor district that we're looking to, you know, avoid that, that type.
Yes, but A, you're not going to have tow truck after tow truck, truck coming in. And B, as soon as the tow truck comes in, it goes in the driveway, makes a right, and it's gone. So you're not having tow trucks parked out front as you would in your normal service center where that's where the tow trucks bring it in, load and unload. See, this is, this is why, I mean, I read the Islip code. I know what is not prohibited and what is prohibited. And if I, again, thought that this was your usual run-of-the-mill collision center, I would say, don't bother. But when I saw the prototype, when I saw the way that they planned to accept and discharge cars, when I saw where customers can relax and made sure that anything they wanted was right next door if it wasn't being offered inside, I said, this is the perfect site. And the only visibility for Tesla is the name Tesla.
Yeah.
You don't know that if that's a motor vehicle repair shop, if that's a dealership, if it's just a charging station. You can't tell. It blends perfectly into the Vets Corridor landscape. And yes, I agree, it would be great if the town board took a look at that and revised the code. But things change so quickly these days, the town board doesn't change the code for every circumstance.
Yes.
So we had, that's the reason why you're vested with the power to waive this restriction for this application in this particular area.
Okay. Mr. Wilson?
I think it's a, it's a great-looking building. I think there's definitely a need for it, but I do think it's a little disingenuous to call this a charging station with a collision center. I mean, I think most would agree, it's a collision center that has some chargers there. And I, and I really don't think it's the type of chargers people would use. I get, you know, there are superchargers a couple miles down the road. I still don't understand why someone would ever go there to charge. And I don't, I don't agree with you would go to upgrade the software. I mean, if you own a Tesla, had a Tesla, chances are you have Wi-Fi, right? And that, right, usually happens at home in the driveway, no?
No, as a Tesla owner myself, and this is where I can bring a little bit of EV perspective, first, I want to throw out, the quality of our coffee is greatly overstated at this hearing. It's not super great, but we can definitely step it up. As a Tesla owner, one of the key points of buying a Tesla is you buy a car and features and software unlocked over the lifetime of that vehicle. So the car that you buy today has vastly different features than the car that you buy tomorrow. We see that with autopilot and software developments that have come down the line throughout the life of the vehicles. I live in a multifamily development in Austin, Texas. Thirty-two-story high-rise building where the chargers are in my parking lot, I don't have Wi-Fi there. So I can't download any software over time. I actually have to drive in to one of our collision centers to get an update, which, you know, is something as a company we recognize and we're working on. Teslas are meant to be connected vehicles. But as towns look to densify their housing and create more housing and more affordable housing, they install chargers, this is one of the aspects that they don't often look at. Tesla collision centers have a unique...
But most of these updates could happen in the driveway, at home with Wi-Fi.
It absolutely could.
Right.
Yeah. What, I think the unique point that we look to make with that is that multifamily housing is taking off quite greatly in a lot of municipalities. We're offering something that's unique in this space where we store the software on site. You can come in, plug in, grab a cup of coffee, download your software and go on with your merry way. Okay. The other point that I would call out, and I just wanted to answer your question about the towing, we do actually have the ability to control towing. The only after-hours drop-offs that are approved for Tesla collision centers are through Tesla Insurance, who have unique instructions to be able to drop off at points in our lot where we indicate and have access instructions to be able to open gates, get in and drop vehicles. We don't accept after-hour tow-ins from third-party towing companies because in some cases with a Tesla, the vehicle needs to be inspected for damage and make sure that that vehicle is secured before it just sits on the lot overnight. That's something that, you know, is very important to us. If an after-hours tow-in needs to happen, towing companies are provided with instructions that they need to either go to a service center or they need to take it back to their lot and have it brought back to a Tesla during business hours for that vehicle to be inspected. So just one point that I want to make, I want to call out there. Also to Ms. Woznick's point of, I think I heard, not being able to necessarily fulfill all the repair hours that would be needed in the business that this collision center would demand, indicating that part of the parking would be used for, I think inventory was the word used in the report? Please correct me if I'm wrong, by the way. We start our collision business with third-party collision centers. We call them TAC centers, Tesla Authorized Collision Centers. We market and look very closely at the repair hours that are being consumed by those centers and the demand that's still needed in the market to be able to satisfy our customers. We've identified in this area, and this is why we're coming out here with 130 very well-paying jobs that we intend to, you know, bring to this, this community, that there aren't enough repair hours available in the market, and that is why we need to come in. We foresee that this building will meet most of those repair hours, but we're also actively looking in communities up and down Long Island to ensure that we can meet our customers' needs, which we know we're not right now. So just a couple of points that I wanted to point out, and I know that this is a very challenging application. It sounds like there's a lot of reservations. If there's any questions that I can answer to help educate, you know, we're not, we're not saying we don't want this building. We want this building, but it sounds like there's also a code that might be out of date that might need a little bit of updating. And if there is anything that I can do to reassure or educate while we're here, very happy to do that. I think coming to a board meeting like this and standing up and being part of the community, and I do want to thank the community member who stood up earlier, that was actually one of my concerns as well. We originally visited the site in the summer and it was very lush and very green. I drove by and I was like, ooh, hey, I can see the houses back there. We need to talk to our developer about actually putting up a screened fence to help keep that sightline protected for those houses behind it. That's why we come out to these communities is, you know, we want to make sure that your concerns are heard and there's an education behind it.
Mr. Ruler?
Mr. Gray, you mentioned AHRC. I have two, two questions.
I have two questions, one with the AHRC and one with someone else. AHRC, what were their complaints to you?
Uh, actually, I'm going to have Brian do it because Brian met with the CEO of the AHRC.
Thank you, guys. Yeah.
What were their concerns?
So their concern, it was, it was just kind of a, it was not understanding exactly what the use was. So they were concerned about traffic. Uh, I did have a, a face-to-face meeting with them in their office and it was very well-received. I explained to them that the site is owned by right for industrial, so that means a warehouse, distribution center. This site in particular, or this use will be significantly less noise, candidly, than, than a permitted use a- as of right currently. Um, and significantly less traffic. You know, the good news, electric vehicles, so from a noise perspective, it's, it's, you know, about as minimal as it gets from an industrial zone district. So, um, you know, we, we do a lot of these throughout the country. This is about, candidly, as clean of an industrial use as you get. I do understand the code and, and I understand it, it is dated in that regard. One of the things I will say is, is Tesla is, is, as some of you know, like, the repair and maintenance on these cars is more, they're more like TVs, candidly, than they are like cars these days. That's the reality. There's no oil versus when this code was drafted. There's, there's none of, none of the odors that, that we're talking about. So it is, it is very different in nature from that perspective. But we did all, we did address AHRC's concerns. They're totally happy with it. Candidly, they'd prefer to see this than, than a typical warehouse use.
And I know it's a big property, but 119 storage areas for cars?
So, so that's, so that was fully approved for fleet maintenance, or no, fleet, uh, fleet storage. So by way of example, we could lease the site to Amazon and that could be for, um, dedicated Sprinter vans. So that's how the site was, was designed day one. This is actually a lot, a lot less intensive in nature, but that is just, that is just how it was equipped and how it's approved.
Okay. Ms. Cruz?
I have a question. On your, um, uh, letter you gave us here, you, this shows that you have 65, 65 individuals or employees per shift with two shifts running between 6:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m.
Yes, Ms. Cruz.
So that's, where, where's the parking for that? Because I also see storage for these cars. And I do have an issue with it being so close to those, um, residents behind.
Yeah.
Um, because you are doing all of the work behind the building, where all, you know, towards the residents. So I do have a problem with that. And I do agree that, you know, even though I, this site is where you guys want to be, may not necessarily be where it should be because that's where, um, I have a problem with it, especially with the service part, where, you know, people who are driving by, going to the airport, they want a service part of it. And where they can come in and have a snack or whatever it is that they might need for the fuel part, or maybe the charging station, and you're not offering that. Maybe that's something, um, that, you know, can be looked into. But I do have a problem with the, all of the shifts that are happening with all the employees.
Yeah, we plan to grow into those shifts, and that's what I think, um, we put in the operational letter is the, like, this is what it's going to grow into, rather than trying to present to you a, you know, a rosy picture of, oh, we're just going to have one shift and this is what you would expect, and then it grow into something else. We hope to load two shifts into this building. And again, I spoke to the numbers and the amount of demand that we show for this site. We show that much demand, and we would like to launch with two shifts. Realistically, out of the jump, it would probably be one shift of employees, 65 tops. As we grow, though, and I think the noise comes up again, um, this is a well-insulated concrete building. I do understand that both of the exposures to the building open from the back. It's important to call out that we use high-speed doors with those that are thick painted doors. The nice thing about the high-speed doors and that this is a conditioned building, we want to keep that air conditioning inside and the climate well-controlled. Especially with paint operations, we need to keep any contaminants out of the building. So the doors come up, cars come out, doors close right behind them. Noise is also at a very minimum with Tesla. We don't do a lot of banging and hammering that you'd see a lot of collision centers. Most of our collision repairs are repair replace. So we're looking at replacing whole panels on vehicles and painting whole panels, rather than trying to hammer things out. I also don't think it was called out-
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your letter says here significant collision damage. So it's not just dings and just repairing or updating?
Oh, no, definitely. It's significant, it's significant collision damage. I, I think that's where, like, part of where we come in and kind of, you know, like, help educate is, with a normal collision repair, you're looking at, you know, an artisan worker coming through and hammering out dents and those kinds of things. In order to get the panel back in the line, we replace the panel. It's much simpler and much easier for the customer and more cost-effective in the end. So you don't get a lot of that extra noise that you might find at a traditional collision repair shop. I don't want to downplay, though, that you will still see, hear hammering. You still will hear cutting noises, those kinds of things. But in the grand scheme, inside of the building that we're proposing, um, it's very well insulated.
What do you foresee is the primary use of that site?
As the primary use of that site, um, we definitely look at it as a, you know, auto body restoration with a very needed point in the front of charging. And, you know, we're happy to bring that as something that's different from, I think, your traditional fueling station or an auto body repair site where we're looking at adding really a unique opportunity and a unique service to that area. 65 high-paying jobs, a very big tax contributor. Like, we see all the benefits for the town itself, for its constituents. We know that there's a service that needs to be provided, and we'd like to come in and provide that service. On an ancillary side of things, we also know that there's charging that needs to be done too. And we want to provide those services in the spirit of what we can through navigating through this code.
So from your answer, if I'm hearing you correctly, the accessory use is the charging, the primary use is the, is the auto body repair?
As far as the application states, the primary use is charging and the ancillary use would be a collision repair.
I know that's the application says, but what you just said sort of hinted that the other way.
Yeah.
So the primary use would be the repair of vehicles?
Per the application, the primary use would be charging and the secondary use would be a collision repair.
Okay, so going back to my question that I asked you originally, which you answered, which hinted, not hinted, directly stated that the primary use would be the repair.
As the application-
You can't have it both ways. There's got to be one way or the other, something on paper and something in reality.
Yeah, and what's, what's on paper and is the application before the board today, the primary use would be charging, the secondary use would be collision repair. But I would point out, and I'd like it to show, that that's the way that we're having to navigate the code in order to bring what we believe is a service to the town and to its constituents within this property.
So, so Mr. Gray, I guess, Mike, I mean, I go back to the original, the ICD is the ICD that's adopted. We're not sort of a legislative body here to change code. But what would stop a regular vehicle repair shop from putting up a nice building and saying we're doing it all inside, or a car dealership putting up a nice building and saying, well, everything's being done inside? There is a reason why the code was adopted the way it was. And just to say a, a nice building negates everything else, sort of, goes against it.
No, it's a nice building from the front and from the back, and everything is done inside. Every, uh, your, your run-of-the-mill, uh, collision center, uh, tow it in whenever you want, bring your car in whenever you want, leave it wherever you want, unload in the front. We do it by appointment only. Everything is in the back. Just to answer that person's, uh, questions, the, the signage is what you see, uh, on this. There's no need for additional signage in the back. There's no additional lighting, and we're happy to increase the, uh, tree buffer to add additional screening. Uh, again, as, uh, Mr. Coulter pointed out, he noticed that, uh, it was a little thin, so we're happy to remedy that. There is a plethora of additional, uh, things. There's no noise that can be heard, whereas if you drive by any other collision center, you hear the noise. You don't see tow trucks in front. Uh, and as far as the comment that, you know, you see tow trucks going in and going out, well, the alternative to see semi-tractor trailers, which are much noisier than tow trucks, going in and going out at a much greater frequency than tow trucks. Uh, again, tow trucks are still scheduled by appointment. All the employee parking is in the back. While there is no convenience market per se, the benefits of a convenience market are still being provided. Food, snacks, coffee, drinks, additionally, a lounge area, a waiting room, there would be TVs. There would be a lot of additional benefits over and above what your standard convenience market is. So bottom line, what I think I'm trying to say is that when the drafters of the code sought to prohibit motor vehicle repair in the ICD district, they did not and could not envision a collision center by Tesla where everything is done cleanly, inside, with no noise, no visual impacts, no auditory impacts. The residences in the back are protected by thick buffers, which we will add to. No additional lighting. No signage, no neon. This is completely different than what was envisioned. And this is why the, the drafters trusted this board with the ability to waive that requirement rather than, uh, send us to the BZA. Thank you.
Mr. Gray, have you met with the community in the area? Because I, I have a petition here signed by over 60 residents on Aaron, Nathan Hill, all the immediate residences behind that. I'm just wondering, you say it's a needed service for the community. Have you or your clients spoken to the community?
Well, I will tell you, we had a, this is not the first public hearing we have had on this particular property. We had one for a special permit for a warehouse use, uh, and I believe only one resident showed up to that. If we had been notified that there were any issues with our application, and again, I had asked to be notified, uh, we would have, of course, reached out. We always do community outreach when there are issues. There were nothing brought to our attention. The only thing that was brought to our attention was AHRC's concerns, and we immediately responded to that. We're happy to meet with the community, uh, if this board would like us to, and let them know exactly what's going here. I think the petition, uh, which I have not seen, uh, simply said, hey, a collision center's coming, stop it. Uh, or, or it may be signed by people who aren't thrilled with the Tesla name right now, which you may have seen in the news. But, uh, so I really don't know what was behind it. But I think, uh, if everything that I've explained to you tonight was explained to them, we'd see a, a much different story.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further you want to add?
No, that's it.
I, I just say the petition may talk about other things, but specifically mentions that the code prohibits vehicle repair shops in the area and talks specifically about the ICD and residential zones abutting it and the like. I can say from my perspective, I'm one member of the board, but, um, getting past that primary part, which is that vehicle repairs are expressly prohibited in the district, is problematic for me. Anybody can put up a nice building and put a non-electric vehicle, vehicle repair shop there, and then once we open the door, anybody can go in there and say, I'm putting up a nice building. Anybody can do that. That's the precedent we're setting.
Every, anybody can put up a nice building and anybody can say, I want to put, now I want to put a collision center there. But I think the differences that I've enunciated tonight between a Tesla collision center and another run-of-the-mill center, whether it be in a nice building or not, uh, can't be matched.
Certainly, your opinion and mine certainly differs on that, if we create that precedent. I also would think that next to a residential community, these uses are not compatible. I mentioned the fact that we have the petition that was signed by over 60 residences. Tow trucks, even if the houses are restricted, are still going up and down the corridor, going in and out of there. It is a very large vehicle repair shop. I know this, the application was written for the purpose, for the town code, to say that the primary use would be charging. I'm not sure, based upon the answers tonight, that that still remains true, but I'll leave that out there.
Well, again, tow trucks, semis, and a lot more semis than tow trucks.
I'm dealing with the application that's before us this evening.
Yes, no, that's, that's what I'm saying.
You know, the outdoor use, outdoor parking, or whether it be in the back of any wrecked vehicles, I think that the application does not meet the spirit or the intent of the ICD. It requires, if we get past the first, the major hurdle, a number of waivers. I, again, I'll stress, I think the primary use is auto repair. I think the charging is an accessory use. The application may state differently. There is no true food service use. I know your contention is that there is one next door, you don't want to sort of take away from them. So I think in this case, especially-
And there's also food service i- in the Tesla building.
But the, the intent of what's in there for a accessory food service use is not met. I mean, you're providing somebody to go inside, get a cup of coffee and a snack while they're waiting. There is no general use for the community itself unless they're driving a Tesla.
Well, why would they want to go to a Tesla convenience store when they can go to a deli and convenience store right next door that specializes in just that?
Well, you can go into a gas station regardless if there's a fuel, as a accessory use for a food service there and utilize the service as well. And then I would just say that the special use requirements serve the interest of the public, and I think, in my opinion, are reasonable and therefore justified, and which is the reason I would not support this application this evening. Is there anything else from the board? If not, I would ask if there's a motion.
I need your mic.
Mr. Brown?
I mean, it, it's a difficult decision tonight, and based on Ms. Wozniak's staff report, and, and the code itself, the code itself says the use, a collision place, no matter how nice it looks, be it a Tesla, be it a Chrysler, it doesn't matter. It's outright prohibited by the code and the ICD. And based on Ms. Wozniak's staff report and the comments from my colleagues on the board, I'm going to make a motion to deny and close the public hearing.
It's a motion by Mr. Brown to close the public hearing and deny the application. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Rugiari. All in favor of denying the application?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions, the application is denied. Thank you.
And I wish you would find another place on the ISL town for this business. We really would love to have you.
Next item on the agenda, site plan modification decision, Nether Bay LLC, SP 2019-023, 36 South Clinton Avenue, Bay Shore. App can request a site plan modification to remove the requirement for a decorative fence in the year round, in the year, in the rear yard pursuant to TC 5302. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow members of the board. My name is Charles Ferraro, managing partner of Nether Bay LLC, doing business at 8 Ocean Avenue, Suite 3, Bay Shore, New York, 11706. We're here this evening to ask the board to, for permission to remove a eight-foot estate fence from an approved plan on the 72-bed assisted living facility. I distributed a couple of pictures. The top page is a picture of the backyard where the blue line represents where the estate fence would go. I think if you take a look at the, um, I think it was actually a mistake in the, uh, in the architect by putting a fence, and especially an eight-foot fence there. If you see the surrounding fences there now, they are six-foot fences. The application was approved for an eight-foot fence. This is a 72-bed assisted living facility specializing in memory care. It's housing for seniors. I don't see the benefit for a duplicate fence in the rear yard that would prohibit any of the residents from walking into the buffer. We do have a six-foot fence-
Mr. Ferraro, I don't want, you're welcome to present as long as you want. I think we've all read through this and seen the photos prior to it. If we have questions, we'll ask you, but I'm willing to let you continue if you'd like.
No, that's fine.
I'll go right to Mr. Colgan for a report then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As stated by the applicant, this application proposes to remove the requirement for an eight-foot decorative fence in the rear yard. This was required on the conceptual site plan presented to the town back in 2019 to help address privacy issues. All other site improvements have been completed pursuant to that site plan, and upon visual inspection by staff, the proposed eight-foot fence would not appear to improve the privacy of the site. There is substantial vegetation on the other side of the buffer fence, and the location of the proposed fence is off, is offset from the buffer, which does conform to the 25-foot standard with the exception of the 10-foot encroachment of the old barn, which was approved by the town board. Based on this, the staff has no- Uh, based on this, the staff has no objection to their request as adequate protections appear to be in place to ensure the privacy of the residences to the west.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? The applicant like to add anything further?
No, thank you.
Is there a motion?
Chairman.
Ms. Rugiari?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, a motion that we close this hearing and grant this application.
It's a motion by Ms. Rugiari to grant the application. Is there a second? Mr. Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the application is granted.
Abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry, and there's one abstention. The application is granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board.
Mr. Ruland was not here for the original public hearing on this, so he's abstaining.
Yeah, I wasn't here for the public hearing.
Have a good night, thank you. Last item on the agenda, planning board application. Decision item, Bethpage Federal Credit Union, Forleef, PB 2025-004, southwest corner of North Research Place and Carlton Avenue, County Route 17. Central ISLIP 233 South Research Place. App can request planning board approval for signage in the PDDRS district pursuant to 68-324C3A. Good evening, Ms. Wozniak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the property is located on the northwest corner of North Research Place and Carlton Avenue in Central ISLIP, and it's the site of several retail stores and restaurant path sites. Tonight, the applicant is looking to obtain signage approval as part of the rebranding of Bethpage Federal Credit Union to Forleef Federal Credit Union. The applicant is proposing to replace the two existing channel letter signs with two new channel letter signs with the new business name. The signs are located on the retail building attached to the west of the Home Depot building, exactly where the previous signage was. The proposed signage is con- is consistent with previous approvals for this tenant space as well as other signage in the center. Therefore, planning recommends the board approve the signage as presented.
Any questions for Ms. Wozniak? Not seeing any, is there a motion? Ms. Cruz?
I'll make a motion to grant the application.
It's a motion by Ms. Cruz to grant the application, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ruland, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the application is granted. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Brown, seconded by Mr. Ruland, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, we're adjourned, thank you, have a good night.